So she'll be here to help me answer any questions you guys might have concerning the program. So our landscape incentive program, it's two aspects to it. It's a residential and commercial landscape conversion program. I believe we've presented to you guys about this program before, but we have two different types of projects that are kind of bundled within this program. So there's a lawn replacement program and then there's also an irrigation conversion project that people can apply for. And then with those, we have a tree bait add-on that we've added last year. We've been noticing that tree canopy and tree coverage is a really important part of the communities. And it's one concern when people are doing landscape conversion projects. And so we wanted to make sure we're also incentivizing people to put in trees in their landscape, put them in the correct way. And so we started offering this add-on to our program last year. So we wanted to talk with you guys today about offering a pilot program within your city. If you give us permission to start running this program, we would open it up this spring. We would not require that you adopt any sort of water efficient landscape ordinance. The only aspect to that is that we would only be offering Central's funding portion. So previously when we presented, we talked about the program and one of its funding partners being the Division of Water Resources. And in order to access that funding, cities have to adopt water efficient landscape ordinances. So originally, we were requiring cities to adopt that, to participate in the program at all. But as we've been meeting with cities and we've spoken with the mayor and Brian and Chris, we wanted to make Orem City our pilot. And we figured with proximity and also our partnership with Orem, we felt like it would be a good opportunity to try to just offer our funding without the ordinance adoption. And this would also be eligible for residential and commercial properties. So what that would look like for Orem is we would be offering $1.50 per square foot to your residents to remove lawn or replace lawn in their landscapes with water efficient landscaping. And $50 or 50 cents a square foot, I wish $50, 50 cents a square foot for irrigation conversion projects. So those would be projects where people were swapping out their overhead spray irrigation and existing planting beds to mold up irrigation. And then the tree bait would be $50 per tree, up to five trees for residential projects and up to 10 trees for commercial. So in the past, when we've offered programs to Orem residents, we saw some great participation. We had 81 applications in 2022. And throughout that year, we were able to pay about $55,000 in incentives to Orem City residents. So we've already seen that we had some really a great response to our program. We did offer it here initially. We want to clarify what our program is not. So we would not be paying out for projects that are all concrete or that don't have plants within their project. So our main goal is really to, I mean, it's really water conservation, but we want to have a holistic approach to our program. So we're not just looking at water conservation. We also want it to be aesthetically pleasing. We want it to be easy to maintain for the public. And we want it to be nice for your community. So we don't want to come in and operate a program that's not something that you want within your community.
Are those found in the land?
They are. These are both Orem properties that we found. So that's another aspect is we really want to work with the city to collaborate on ordinances, what you do allow, what's against your city ordinance. So the more we can collaborate and communicate, the more we can educate our participants on what is actually allowed in Orem. So ineligible projects and materials are something that we often hear called zero-scares. And so that's just a landscape that may have artificial turf in it or it's just rocks. It really doesn't have any living plant material. So we don't allow those types of projects in our program. We also don't allow artificial turf. If it's in the project area or if it's outside the project area, we don't usually say anything, but we do not incentivize it unless we know that a city, like Orem, I know you guys have some limitations on allowing artificial turf in the yard. So if we know that, we've been collaborating with the city, we can definitely educate our participants on the areas where artificial isn't allowed, period. So for instance, if it wasn't allowed at the park strip and we knew that, then and we saw a project come through and someone had artificial turf in their project or in their landscape design, we would let them know that not only will we not pay for it, but it's also not eligible for Orem City. It doesn't need Orem City codes. We also don't incentivize water features or impervious hardscapes.
What's that? What's that last one?
Concrete. So any landscape that's not sustainable. So these are some projects that we have paid out. The one on the left is in Orem. And so you can see, even though it's small and it's a new landscape, we did require a lot of plants. So I believe that matches your city code of requiring 50% plant coverage. Here are just some other projects that have been really well done within our program. If people want to leave grass, we allow them to leave grass. But we do a lot of education and work on trying to teach the public on where the proper placement of grass is. And so we're really trying to get people to eliminate areas that are what we consider non-functional grass areas. So they can have it if they want to leave it in the project, but if they don't want to, we're also fine with that, too. So just some basic landscape incentive requirements are 50% plant coverage at maturity. We do require that they install a drip irrigation system. So we're hoping that that's helping them maintain their landscape to continue to look nice. Three to four inches of mulch, that's another requirement, too. So previously, when we presented, we talked about the program and one of its funding partners being the Division of Water Resources. And in order to access that funding, cities have to adopt water efficient landscape ordinances. So originally, we were requiring cities to adopt that as to participate in the program at all. But as we've been meeting with cities and we've spoken with the mayor and Brian and Chris, we wanted to make Orem City our pilot. And we figured with proximity and also our partnership with Orem, we felt like it would be a good opportunity to try to just offer our funding without the ordinance adoption. And this would also be eligible for residential and commercial properties. So what that would look like for Orem is we would be offering a dollar fifty per square foot to your residents to remove lawn or replace lawn in their landscapes with water efficient landscaping. And fifty dollars or fifty cents a square foot, I wish fifty dollars, fifty cents a square foot for irrigation conversion projects. So those would be projects where people were swapping out their overhead spray irrigation and existing planting beds to mold up irrigation. And then the tree bait would be fifty dollars per tree, up to five trees for residential projects and up to ten trees for commercial. So in the past, when we've offered programs to Orem residents, we saw some great participation. We had eighty-one applications in twenty twenty-two. And throughout that year, we were able to pay about fifty-five thousand dollars in incentives to Orem City residents. So we've already seen that we had some really a great response to our program. We did offer it here initially. We want to clarify what our program is not. So we would not be paying out for projects that are all concrete or that don't have plants within their project. So our main goal is really to, I mean, it's really water conservation, but we want to have a holistic approach to our program. So we're not just looking at water conservation. We also want it to be aesthetically pleasing. We want it to be easy to maintain for the public. And we want it to be nice for your community. So we don't want to come in and operate a program that's, you know, not something that you want within your community.
Are those found in the land?
They are. These are both Orem's properties that we found. So that's another aspect is we really want to work with the city to collaborate on ordinances, what you know, what you do allow, what's against your city ordinance. So the more we can collaborate and communicate, the more we can educate our participants on what is actually allowed in Orem. So ineligible projects and materials are something that we often hear called zero scapes. And so that's just a landscape that may have artificial turf in it or it's just rocks. It really doesn't have any living plant material. So we don't allow those types of projects under the program. We also don't allow artificial turf. If it's in the project area or if it's outside the project area, we don't usually say anything, but we do not incentivize it unless we know that a city, like Orem, I know you guys have some limitations on allowing artificial turf in the yard. So if we know that, we've been collaborating with the city, we can definitely educate our participants on the areas where artificial isn't allowed, period. So for instance, if it wasn't allowed with a park strip and we knew that, then and we saw a project come through and someone had artificial turf in their project or in their landscape design, we would let them know that not only will we not pay for it, but it's also not eligible for Orem City, doesn't need Orem City codes. We also don't incentivize water features or impervious hardscapes.
What's that? What's that last one?
Uh, concrete. So any hardscape that's not sustainable. So these are some projects that we have paid out. The one on the left is in Orem. And so you can see, even though it's small and it's a new landscape, we did require a lot of plants. So I believe that matches your city code of requiring fifty percent plant coverage. Here are just some other projects that have been really well done within our program. If people want to leave grass, we allow them to leave grass. But we do a lot of education and work on trying to teach the public on where the proper placement of grass is. And so we're really trying to get people to eliminate areas that are what we consider non-functional grass areas. So they can have it if they want to leave it in the in the project, but if they don't want to, we're also fine with that, too. So just some basic landscape incentive requirements are fifty percent plant coverage at maturity. We do require that they install a drip irrigation system. So we're hoping that that's helping them maintain their landscape to continue to look nice. Three to four inches of mulch, that's another requirement, too. That we've incorporated. So just some basic landscape incentive requirements are fifty percent plant coverage. In case you catch up, first part. So another one of our requirements is the three to four inch mulch requirement. And that is to help with weed maintenance. And again, just to kind of help ensure the longevity of these projects so they're looking nice. And then if someone does want to leave lawn in the landscape, we require that any of the remaining lawn is not narrower than eight feet. So commercial properties that we've done, so one example that I'm going to show you is our Duchesne Field Office. We remove nineteen thousand square feet of lawn and it has an estimated water savings of five hundred and eighteen thousand gallons of water annually. And just as an example, this project would have received twenty-nine thousand four hundred dollars if it was an Orem participant that had had done this project. So this is what it looked like before. You can see a lot of grass for commercial property.
Just to clarify, with that twenty-nine thousand it would have received, would that be with the previous program or with the new pilot program?
With the new pilot program. So that's just with a dollar fifty a square foot.
Okay, cool.
It's a pretty nice incentive.
Yeah.
So this was just a commercial property example where we have a lot of grass. It wasn't being used. That's what happens frequently on commercial properties. And so we replace it with this water-wise landscape that's really lush and attractive. And this is what we're trying to get people to install. Here's another example. This was a city roundabout in Cedar Hills. It was six thousand square feet of lawn being replaced. An estimated water savings of one hundred and sixty-five thousand gallons of water annually. And with this example project, the city would have received nine thousand and fifty-one dollars. Here's a good before photo. You can see the grass is kind of struggling. And there's a lot of areas like this where the grass just doesn't do well in these environments. And so as you're thinking about adopting this program, I'm sure people already have some ideas in their heads of some good places in Orem that could be replaced. And this is what that looked like after. It was a really fun project for our staff because as they were out measuring, some residents had stopped by and thanked them for the project. They were really happy with the way it turned out. And then just some other programs that you guys are, your residents are already eligible for. There's a statewide residential smart controller rebate program. And then Central also has a commercial smart controller rebate program that your parks would be, are already eligible for. We've done more than seventeen thousand smart controllers that we've helped replace already within our service area.
We would face all of ours, all of ours with your assistance.
Oh, perfect. I'm so glad you're taking advantage of it.
Oh, we don't do it.
In in all of our parks, right?
Yes, all of them, all of our properties, all of them.
That's great. And then we also have a toilet rebate program. There's a residential version that is eligible statewide. And then we also offer a commercial toilet rebate program through our website. And the properties just must be built before nineteen ninety-four to be eligible. And devices that are being replaced have to currently have one point six gallons per flush or more to be eligible for the incentive.
What kind of incentive do they get for that?
For the commercial or the residential?
Let's say residential toilet replacement.
It's a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty dollars and they can do up to two toilets per property. Yeah.
And then you mentioned trees, your three as well, two lives trees.
Doesn't pay for them to do it.
Yep.
And that's five trees.
Five trees. That's five trees per project for residential projects and then ten per project for commercial. But if somebody was doing a front yard project one year, they could get five trees. They do their backyard the next year.
Another kind of two parts.
Yep.
Is that a calendar year or is that a year since they did it?
Just per project.
Per project.
So if they get, if they do multiple projects within a year, they would be eligible for five trees each of those projects.
You just have to reapply in a different form?
Mm-hmm. Well, just a different area of the landscape.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Front yard, back yard.
Yep. Yes, exactly. And then just as an additional resource, we also offer thirty plus classes per year at our headquarters. It's not far from here. We teach on a variety of topics, a lot of them relating to the landscape or anything that's trying to promote our programs. We want to educate people as far as doing our our programs really well and being successful. And then we're also willing to customize any courses. If the city is ever interested in collaborating to teach classes here, our staff's always happy to come help and collaborate on any efforts that you might be interested in. That's everything.
I'll just say that I really appreciate the desire to coordinate with the city and coordinate even with our MIT or co- through some of it. And I really appreciate you listening to the idea of trying to be purely incentive based and rather than sort of forced or punitive based. So it's really, I think, just meaningful improvement and and incorporations and the feedback. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
I think you guys have done a great job. We met, I put Jordan out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how that worked, but anyway, we met up there and we started talking. And we talked about the program and I told you that we liked the program, but that we want it to be incentive based, opposed to punitive based. And then you took the challenge and you went back and you've come back to the great program, I think. Uh, because this, I'd gotten some feedback from residents who said, we want to be part of the program. We're saying, well, we, the program doesn't really work for all of our citizens. But what you've got now is is those citizens who want to take advantage of this, they've got the right to, they get the benefit of it. And it's, I I just, I just want to congratulate you for thinking outside the blocks and doing this pilot program.
Thank you so much. We're happy that you were willing to listen to our, you know, our approach to, and hopefully it works really well for your city. So. Thank you. Well done. Thanks. Thank you so much.
Chris, anything else about the city's connection with Central Utah Water? Why why do we meet up with them at the Jordan Outbound?
Yeah, yeah. So there is a way. It was no, the mayor, it was no surprise that she met you that day. We wanted to connect these two and the council and engage in that conversation. They've sensed pivotal and reacted and I think very favorably to what we desire. And it's it's a great relationship that we have with Central Utah Water and we've had it forever. And we will continue to have it on many different levels, from water treatment, groundwater studies to water conservation, um, everything associated with Jordan and the water. We we contracted them for a quarter of our water that we use annually. So our relationship is critical to our success in the city into the future. I did also want to 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 recognize Mr. Leifling. And he's an assistant general manager at Gen, uh, at Central Utah Water Conservancy District as well. So.
Well, and Amanda was super nice. I mean, I remember that. You came up to me and the mayor and said, let's work together, you know, we want to work together. And I, this is a win-win, definitely.
Thank you so much.
With your blessing, then we'll work with Pete on advertising this and making this known to the public. And then we'll have startup days probably this spring, I think, is what I'm hearing from you.
Yeah, yeah.
We're eligible to take this into doubt.
How do you have a dollar amount set aside that is a little, once that money's gone, it's gone for the year, and then you reset in the following year?
I do.
Do you like, I think, once Pete gets the word out.
I mean, exhaust our resources.
We have been close to filling out our budget yet.
But we would love to.
That's a good problem.
We would love to have that.
And and maybe Pilot Works could be the pilot project at Orem City. I'm offering it. Okay, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thanks for having us.
So Chris, when do you anticipate this going live that that people will?
This spring, so.
The larger applications.
Did it launch good.
Typically, we open, we do a soft opening in around March, but then it's formal at the April fifteenth.
Okay. All right, nice. Sounds good. Okay, well, thank you.
This move item number three. Uh, this is a proposed resolution to allow Alpine School District to sell a CTE property in Orem. Aaron, if you want to walk through that.
Mayor City Council. Uh, I'm here to present this resolution that is for you regarding the signal of CTE property belonging to Alpine School District. Um, CTE stands for Career Technical Education. And it's a program that Alpine School District runs where they teach students technical and career skills, often in more blue collar context. Uh, you know, welding, auto repair, uh, construction, that sort of a thing. And as part of that program, um, they build, uh, two houses every year with the students.
Aaron, one quick interjection. Chief Sanderson, we had a CT, our our ambulance paramedics had a CTE relationship, I think, with school district and teaching EMT.
Yeah, our cad program.
I'm out.
Oh.
Now you should be able to go in.
I'm not sure I extended my screen.
Then we're just in that second semester of second class, essentially. So we'll do a graduation when that comes in, like mayor council exec stash. And we didn't do last, we graduated class, so a lot of lessons. Sorry, Aaron, my interjection, I completely ruined the technology.
Uh, no, I've, I have struggled looking before that. Anyway, um. Sorry, excuse me. Yeah, so so they do these these great programs. Um, one of them is that they build homes. Um, uh, two, two homes each school year. Um, they run those programs out of Tempanogus High School, one of them, and the other one out of, I believe, Lehigh High School. And, um, they they build homes in those general areas. This is the home in question tonight. It's at seven sixty-five South Eight Hundred West here in Orem. And, uh, this home was built, uh, there are some photos there that you can see. It was built by the students, uh, in Alpine School District. Uh, with supervision from the teachers, of course, and everything, um, for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. Um, and every year after they build a home, they then, uh, sell it and then use that money to purchase new properties and pay for materials and whatnot to to build the home the next year with the students. Um, so this is, uh, this is the one that was built in our area. Last year, uh, it it took them a while to find a buyer and they now have one and it's under contract. However, because of the school district splits that's going on, uh, state law requires that for any real property to be disposed in any of, inside the that's owned by the old school district, all of the city councils of municipalities that belong to the new school district have to approve that sale. So in this case, uh, in order for Alpine to be able to sell this home, um, they need the consent of Linden Vineyard Pleasant Grove Orem City Councils, all four of them. Um, it's our understanding that the other three, Linden Pleasant Grove and Vineyard, uh, city councils have all, have already passed resolutions consenting to the sale. We're up tonight to 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 give our consent on this. Um, the the proceeds from the sale will go back into the CTE program. And then, uh, they'll use those funds in order to to build this year's house. It's actually already a construction. Um, this year's house, there's one in Lehigh, and then there's another one that they're working on right now in Orem. Um, there were also, uh, two lots in Pleasant Grove that are currently purchased and owned by Alpine School District. They're slated to be used in this program. Obviously, at least one of them won't be used in that way because Alpine, well, not by Alpine anyway, because it'll cease to exist before they get around to it. Um, but anyway, uh, I, in the, in the packet, it's the red, like, obvious resolution. What's that?
One clarification, Aaron.
Yeah.
Uh, the business administrator, um, Jason Sundberg, said that the Lehigh, in Lehigh, in that CTE program, they've already sold a property there. And then that'll be reinvested into that CTE program. And similarly, this one will be reinvested into the CTE program that runs out of Tempanogus High School.
And so, um, thank you, Brent, for that clarification. In the, in the packet, there's a copy of the resolution. We've made some tweaks to it since it went out. And, uh, the main part that was changed here were these three paragraphs here that emphasizes that, um, the proceeds from the sale will go into the CTE program, uh, here at Tempanogus, that's right out of Tempanogus. And, uh, will will benefit the students building a home here in Orem. And, um, at least the plan is in Pleasant Grove eventually as well. Uh, we wanted to be sure that that everyone felt comfortable with the idea of selling property that is going to go in our future school district. Um, and and having spoken with Alpine School District, they they have indicated that this this money will go back into that program.
I I thought the information you, they sent out with our packets explained it very well. And they do add license updates. I'd like to happy to move to prove this role in our need.
Just out of curiosity, um, not that this affects anything, I'm just curious. But do you know if they, on this program, if they're doing this completely with cash? Or if they're, if they put debt against the properties when they roll them, I'm just curious.
I asked them that. They they don't put debt towards it. It's all cash flow.
So they're controlling the cash. Yeah, okay. Nice.
Any, any other questions or concerns you can address?
Thanks for doing that.
Definitely.
Okay. We'll, uh, present that eagle over it then during the, um, during the regular session.
Sounds good. As you're. Actually, Aaron, you're up next, right?
Yes, I am.
So, yeah, we've got an American two fifty resolution. If you'd like to tell us about that.
Sure, I'll tell you a little bit about it and, um, he, I think, will, uh, may be able to help answer questions as well. Um, the American two fifty resolution is just a resolution, um, that essentially the Patriotic Committee, um, in the city, uh, is a subgroup of the of the city council that will work on celebrations for, uh, the United States' two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. They'll have in next.
Twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six, yes, next year. And, um, the state, uh, legislature, uh, passed a bill, I believe it was last year, creating a state commission that will work on celebrating America's two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. And as part of that, they're trying to bring in municipalities and other groups to help organize local events and and celebrations in order to, in order to make that a special year. Um, among those things, they want to do educational activities and and, uh, other things that will help us, uh, unify as we celebrate that big landmark. Anything else you want to add?
No, that covered it. We have some people on our events commission that are very excited to participate in this. And then I think Ju Gao was assigned at the retreat to kind of be the liaison on the city council side. So I think we're pretty good to go. They just won't give us the next, we can't take this step until we form this committee. So that's kind of why we're here.
This'll, this actually happened July twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, all of twenty twenty-six. There'll be a lot of things leading up to it. We're going to add extra patriotic elements to all the events we already do. Uh, plus, it'll be a lot like the Centennial where we just kind of do go a little bit bigger, a little bit more focused on patriotic themes, and then we may have one special event as well.
Okay, yeah, sounds very cool.
I almost brought my charm bracelet.
You should have brought it.
That I got in nineteen seventy-six from the train that dropped and went across the US. I don't know who's old enough to remember that, but I bought a little charm bracelet. I'm, I I'll bring it sometime, you guys.
That'd be great.
I was so excited.
So, Lene, you were saying this was, this was fifty years ago?
Uh, well, no.
There you go.
I won't tell you how old I was.
It was only forty-nine years.
That was a stop?
All right. Any other questions or concerns about this one? It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Uh, real short presentation, uh, about. Uh, real short presentation uh about.
Excuse me, Geneva Road nighttime construction exemption. Very. Last time we were here, talked about sixteen hundred north and working at night for UDOT. Uh, this time, we're here talking about Geneva Road and working at another UDOT project. Bill Hunter is here uh representing uh UDOT, can tell you briefly about the project and uh can answer any questions, but it's it's basically the exact same thing that we discussed last time. UDOT can uh under their state law move forward uh with working at night. This is a way to come in and uh let the council know what's happening. So those questions come to you, or if there are any particular concerns that you may have about uh working at night, then we can raise those here. And then later on the agenda, there's a resolution uh similar to last time.
Similar limitations as far as saw cutting and heavy, the big noise stuff.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It it's the exact same restrictions that you saw last time.
Thank you.
Typically, we're doing it to minimize traffic impacts. We recognize that that creates an impact to residents often. What we would likely see, and we don't have a contractor hired yet, but what we'd likely see is if they need to do a full crossing for like drainage or sewer water, to do it at night with a closure is a lot easier and it's a lot safer. Both of the crews working out there and the traveling public just come in and do it at night. Our crews, our contractors hate to work at night. They don't like that. It's not as, they're not as productive. It's not as easy. They're not all with their families. And so they try to avoid it, but when we get a contractor on board, we can come back to and update you and say, we anticipate them working this many nights.
To that point, this is a project that it's kind of uh become, uh, it's it's building a lot of momentum right now. Do you have just high level uh milestones or timeline that can shape this?
Yeah, I know for like full scale construction, but we're working towards advertisement here in the next few weeks. So we hope to have a contractor on board in about six to eight weeks. And then depending on what their schedule is, it's the other thing with the night work is it helps us get a better price. You know, if if we can't uh do night work, maybe we typically pay more for it for them to get that work in at halves or in like maybe a third of the road, a third and a third. Um, we're hoping to get a good bid. We've been getting getting good bids and we hope to have a contractor on board the next month or two, roughly. Once we have a contractor on board, we can come back and kind of share what their schedule looks like. The other way to get good bids is to not dictate. You know, we think depending on when they start this year, it's about a season and a half type of project. And then just to give you context, so it'll be from University Parkway South. I don't have any work like in the intersection per se. It starts on the very south intersection and goes just south of Temple Property with the widening, so you have a consistent five lane cross section. Um, working south through University Parkway, just past the temple. And it takes us quite a while to get those five lanes back down to two. So you'll see work additional about half mile, maybe three quarters of a mile south of there, but it's not improvements. It's just a taper in and out of the five lane section. The future will be a Lakeview Parkway intersection somewhere in that vicinity. And so we're trying to do as minimal work south of the temple we can, so we don't have a whole bunch to throw away when that Lakeview Parkway intersection comes. Did that answer your question? I kind of danced around. We don't have the exact schedule, but we'll come back and update the council.
So in other words, this is a bit of a proactive effort to ensure the best price in the shortest timeline.
Yes, and what we see, so in our advertisement package, we have to let the contractor know if they can work at night, if they can look towards that, because then they'll bid it. Um, and it's easier to do that now and get a better price if we get approval. State code, state law requires that we go to the local authority, the local agency, which in this case is Orem. Some places it's county, in Utah County, it's the city typically, unless it's unincorporated, then we would go to the county. So we're doing this all over the valley, and I like it at the county level. I do work, or sorry, I like it at the city level. I do other places where it's the county level, county approves it, and then we come do night work, and the city's like, wait, what happened? This model's good because we want you to know that, you know, we we intend to work. Again, I don't see a lot of need for night work here, um, but there'll probably be an occasion, you know, along the way that they would incorporate it to get some crossings. They might pave, they might stripe. There's just a few things that they can do a little easier when they can just restrict the traffic.
I appreciate hearing the comparison to county. Usually, we compare really well to Provo, but we compare really well with.
Yeah, in Salt Lake, it's a county level through, and so they'll say, yes, you can do this, and then the city's like, we don't want this. And so I I like this, the the way Utah County's done it. We've gone to the local authority, which in this case is Orem, and we ask, are you okay for work at night? So any other questions, any questions about the project? This has been a works for a long time. We're really excited to get in.
I I think we're pretty educated, just because we did the whole sixteen hundred north, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And and the restrictions are exactly the same that you saw on that project.
Right.
And uh as they go along, as both said, uh, we'd love to come back and have them update you about when this is going to have start in the timeline and what people can expect. It's a much needed project out there on Geneva Road.
I assume they probably shared with you, you know, like, we'll have a hotline that runs twenty four seven, so if there is a night noise issue, they should call us. Sometimes they'll call you guys, but we'll share with you with that number and email. Or we'll also be proactive. We're not gonna go work at night near residential area without outreach or notification. We'd go door to door with a door hanger to open off doors that are directly adjacent to that work. Like, we're gonna try to be very proactive, so they're they're not blindsided. Again, I mean, I've worked on a lot of the interchanges, like Bangor Highway, that's brutal. Like, we work all night long, and it's the only time they can work with all the traffic. This is not that kind of project. This is gonna, you're gonna see limited pockets of that night work here. And we would do outreach and be proactive. We'd send information to the city to make sure you guys know, and we would do information outreach onsite. There aren't, in in that work zone, on the very northern end, obviously, there are some residential properties directly adjacent. But for the most part of this, it's kind of more agriculture at the moment. I assume you guys are gonna see development happening in this area, but for now, it's not heavy dense residential for the whole duration of construction. You've got the Temple Property, that's a big part of our widening area, and then north of there, on the east side, we see quite a few residents. With the HOAs, we're already in contact. We've been working with them on the ride away. And so for us, it's a pretty easy notification process because we're already PMK with them.
And forgive me if you already said this, um, but what's the website, like, that you, where you can look up particular projects?
There is a state website that's hard to navigate.
Okay.
I will email our specific hotline and email for this project, but they can push out through the council. That's helpful.
Thanks.
It's a long one, like Utah, I UDOT gov slash Geneva Road, uh, but I'll send it out.
Because I've seen those before. If you can get to the right place.
Yeah. Yeah, and we'll have a hotline, and we'll like be proactively pushing that information through your channels that you have, door to door. We'll do a mayhem of prior construction. There'll be a lot of outreach happening so that you will, someone will be surprised by the night work if and when it happens. Um, but generally speaking, we have pretty good reach, and and most of the people that would complain would know how to handle this. We're already here talking to us now, prior to construction. Good question. Any others? Any other thing that I can answer about the project? This is not the last time we'll be talking. I, and it's different than sixteen hundred. I'm not working on that project, but that's a heavy residential border or heavy traffic. Like, it's a whole different approach there. And so I hope you're getting fewer complaints on our project, but we'll be talking, I'm sure, more about this, so.
Sounds good.
Okay, yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for letting me come.
Thank you.
All right, let's just keep going here. Um. We'll start, well, for now, Dave Spencer, are you ready to do some reports on your missions? Okay, so you're next up.
So I'm uh, I'm over the planning commission. Um, we've had one meeting since the beginning of the year. Um, also the recreation commission, which we haven't met yet. Uh, CARE is meeting in March. Um, UCCU board member, I don't know when we're meeting yet.
Ask Lanay, she's whose place you're taking on that.
Yeah, I'll check.
And then uh Sleepy Ridge uh committee, so. Not not, we haven't met, so I don't really have anything to say other than, um, during the planning commission, I think the the planning commission members were a little bit older from our last city council meeting, so it might be good to maybe some people reach out and talk to them. They were not happy. That's all I got.
Okay. All right, um. And you should. Uh, yeah, just talk to Lanay as far as the UCC board. And then talk to Jeff as far as Sleepy Ridge, just as far as what you were doing and passing the thought.
I don't think they've met yet, right? You were just sort of.
So which ones?
Sleepy Ridge.
No, they hadn't met for a long time. I was just trying to get that ball going. So yeah, they're, so I think they're.
But go ahead, just give a golden old.
So ready, things are ready to go, they're ready to meet, and I.
So it's golden old and for sure here.
Yeah.
Right here.
Yes.
Yeah, we're we're coordinating with Golden Old on a meeting time for probably next week.
Okay.
Or we can, or we can.
Sounds good.
David, I'm sorry.
Mayor, if I may, to the point that David was just talking about his assignments, we did get new assignments, and you did a great job of letting us know. But if you could have them reach out to us and let us know where our meetings are, because if we've got new assignments, like David said, I don't know when they're meeting, and it'd be great if I found that out.
So those that are within the city.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They've all been contacted and given the names of who their um council members are.
So they'll include us on an email, inviting us, etc.
Yes, so they should all know it's the ones that are outside. I have their contact information, for example, should I?
Okay.
Yes.
So the different, the different commissions, you sent this out, you you told us to contact.
Yeah, I sent that. Josh was hoping on that, so I had that simple, but all of the internal ones. CARE, planning commission, um, Art Council, I've sent them each who they are, you um, council members aren't, love their safe, I let them know those will be the same members.
Do they know that they need to reach out to those members?
So like recreation, we we need third, because there's two.
And any of them that may be sort of outside organizations, we'll get with them, make sure that they're in the ship, also reaching out.
Yeah, thank you.
So Jeff is getting one now from the youth council, I think, hours ago.
No. You got, you got a new assignment?
Oh, so what's this sheet you sent?
Your, that's twenty twenty four. Let's go to the next tab.
Oh, I just opened it up, sorry.
So go to the next tab, there's twenty twenty five.
I I just opened up the first one I saw, okay.
And you, because you took on a different one, and Jeff took on that one, so some stuff.
Thank you, yep, yep, yep. So anyway, have them contact me.
Yes.
Call me, I'm fine.
Dave.
Sorry, man.
Oh, you're good from confusion. Okay. Uh, just running through this agenda, we'll have a call to order, we'll have an invocation. Uh, we've got Jim Hacks, or Jim Fox, and Madeline Coleman. Who invited them to speak?
Dave Spencer. He said who.
So you invited Jim Fox and Madeline Coleman?
Yes.
Okay, so you just wanna introduce them?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. And then we've got Aers report, items referred by the councils. Uh, we've got item six point one, a donation, excuse me, donation, uh, from Chubby's restaurant for the Gold Star Memorial. And will I just call them up? Chubby's, sort of same, coordinate that?
Gotta be careful, you're awarding that.
They're very proud of them.
Deputy Nico, um, will be the one that will be uh speaking about it and then introducing them to you.
So by Debbie.
So by Debbie.
Yeah.
And we've got six point two, a discussion legislative priorities, and what's to my Kevin Stratton up?
Yep, got Kevin Stratton coming today, and then um I have Representative Nelson Abbot penciled in for next, so. Took that uh council area focus serious, so I'm coming in.
Okay.
Is he zooming or is he coming?
I think Kevin's coming in in person.
And then I have six point three, a presentation on the city council twenty twenty five areas of focus, and that'll be.
And mostly a neat path to paper with the focus on, it's very nice to see.
Cheek is locked up front.
Yeah, this is his. That's the whole speech? You did a great job.
That's the presentation.
And we'll have our personal appearances, and then we've got item number eight, consent items.
So can I ask, may I ask, I have not had a chance to even look through the minutes. Do you guys mind if we just do that at our next meeting?
I'd read through them, but I don't know about the second.
That's fine, I really can get them.
Doesn't matter, it's not a big deal, they can let it.
Okay, so I'll just take a motion that we.
Move it to the next meeting.
Let's just take it up, consent item, move it back to meeting, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So you.
I'll do that.
Um, and then item eight point two, on the consent items, is the resolution that we just talked about, Geneva Road nighttime construction exemption. We'll go to item nine, scheduled items, and a resolution consenting to sell certain parts of the ASD property we talked about. So we'll have that presentation and a short discussion. And.
And none of these look like they're public.
No, just residence.
We've got item nine point two, another resolution, it's going American two fifty that. And then communication items, which is nothing ever. And item, item eleven, city manager information items, which is Brent. And we'll have him listen to a drink, and.
So when Chief Adams got here, who's calling the bats?
Doesn't he take his place?
Doing what?
Uh, we'll teach you, we'll teach.
So Pat, when the meeting ends?
Yes. Chief Adams would always whip Dave and Dave Spencer in a bet on how long the council team was gonna go. And I really don't see anything that's gonna make this go long, so.
You don't know who's signing up there, speaking.
Well, don't chase it.
Old neighbor, it kind of.
Well, let's uh, we'll adjourn this meeting, and then uh, we can have somebody offer who's time, let's see how it goes.
I'll do it.
Our beloved Father, have I been brave for the opportunity we have to gather together today and to discuss the business of our great city? We pray at this time for a special blessing from the few that we're about to partake, that it will give us the the nourishment and strength that we need, that we can use that strength that's already being held around us. So grateful for the many blessings that we have, and we pray for these things in thy son Jesus Christ, Amen.
And then the uh.
All right, we'd like to call this City Council meeting to order and welcome all of you tonight. We'll start out with an invocation from Jim Hawks and then a pledge of allegiance from Madeline Coleman. And Dave Spencer asked them to do this for us, so if you'd like to introduce them.
Yeah, so Jim Hawks and Madeline Coleman, they serve on the Planning Commission. And Madeline is our Chair of the Planning Commission, so I invited them to say their prayer and the pledge.
So appreciate your service.
Our dear Father in Heaven, as we meet this evening as citizens of this wonderful community of Orem, we express our gratitude for the many blessings that Thou hast bestowed upon us. We're grateful for the peace and security and safety that we enjoy in this city. We are grateful for those who serve, those who are employed by the city and those who are elected. We pray that Thou will bless and watch over them. We're grateful to live in this great land of America. And we pray that those who have been chosen to guide the affairs of this country will be wise and the decisions they make, we pray that our nation will be blessed with peace and with prosperity. We pray for those who are suffering because of disasters, we pray that their issues can be resolved. We pray for those who serve this country in protecting us from threats, we pray that Thou will bless them. Again, we are grateful for our blessings, we pray this evening that the proceedings of this night will be acceptable unto Thee, that the decisions that are made will be wise decisions. And we pray that there will be no contention, and we say these things in the name of Thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jim. Madeline, will the audience please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start out with item 6.1, a donation from Chubby's Restaurant for the Gold Star Memorial. And Debbie and Mike Miko, if you'd like to come up and present that.
Thank you so much for the introduction, esteemed Mayor and Council members. We truly appreciate the time tonight that you're giving us to go ahead and introduce the owners of Chubby's Restaurant in Orem. This is Will and Erin Moak, and they have generously held a fundraiser on December 10th at their restaurant, and they took 10% of all their proceeds to donate to the Gold Star Family Memorial. So, super grateful for their generosity and collaboration in this, and I'll go ahead and turn over the time to them to say a few words.
Thank you very much. First of all, I want to share our appreciation for letting Chubby's Cafe be a part of the Orem City community. We are very grateful for the opportunity and we're grateful to be here. So, we would like to present a check to Orem City in behalf of the Gold Star Family Memorial in the amount of $1,000.
He just has.
CTR.
All right, we'd like to call this city council meeting to order and welcome all of you tonight. We'll start out with an invocation. Uh, from Jim Hawks and then a pledge of allegiance from Madeline Coleman. And Dave Spencer asked him to do this for us. So if you'd like to introduce.
Yeah. So Jim Hawks and Madeline Coleman, they serve on the planning commission. And Madeline is our chair of the planning commission. So I invited them to say their prayer and the pledge. So appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Our dear father in heaven. As we meet this evening as citizens of this wonderful community of Orem. We express our gratitude for. The many blessings that thou hast bestowed upon us. We're grateful for the peace and security and safety that we enjoy in this. In this city. We are grateful for those who serve, those who were employed by the city and those who are elected. We pray that thou will bless and. Watch over them. We're grateful to live in this. Great land of America. And we pray that. Those who have been chosen to guide the affairs of this country will be wise and the decisions they make. We pray that. Our nation will be blessed with peace and with prosperity. We pray for those who are suffering. Because of disasters, we pray that. Their issues can be resolved. We. Pray for those who serve this country. And protecting us from threats. We pray that thou will bless them. Again, we are grateful for our blessings. We pray this evening that the proceedings of this night will. Be. Acceptable unto thee that's. The decisions that are made will be wise decisions. And we pray that there will be no contention. And we say these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jim. Madeline, will the audience please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start out with item six point one. A donation. Uh, from Chubby's restaurant for the Gold Star Memorial. And Debbie and Mike Miko, if you'd like to come up and present that.
Thank you so much for the introduction, esteemed mayor and council members. We truly appreciate the time tonight that you're giving us to go ahead and introduce the owners of Chubby's Restaurant in Orem. This is Will and Aaron Moak, and they have generously. Uh, held a fundraiser on December 10th at their restaurant and they took 10% of all their proceeds to donate to the Gold Star Family Memorial. So. Super grateful for their generosity and collaboration in this. And I'll go ahead and turn over the time to them to say a few words.
Thank you very much. First of all, I want to, uh, share our appreciation for letting Chubby's Cafe be a part of the, the Orem City community. We are very grateful for the opportunity and we're. Uh, grateful to be here. So, um, we would like to present a check to Orem City in behalf of the Gold Star Family Memorial, uh, in the amount of $1,000. And we are very grateful for the dedication that, um, Orem City has to such a great, uh, foundation. So thank you very much.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Okay. I just want to say something really quick. I went to our born business alliance lunch and we talked about. The Gold Star Memorial and that if every, we have over 3,000 businesses in Orem, if every business gave a hundred dollars, we'd have our money for our memorial. So. Thank you, Chubbies for, you know, making up the difference for some of these other businesses and getting us on a good start.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, we've got, uh. Item six point two. A discussion of our legislative priorities. By, uh. Representative Kevin Stratton. Senator. You switched on me. Come on up.
Thank you, mayor and wonderful city council member staff and, uh, all the great, uh. Capacity, there was wonderful brain trust capacity trust we have here in the city of Orem. Uh, mayor, how, how would you like me to proceed?
If you just like to give us, um. Kind of probably an update on. Uh, what you see is, is the most important bills and then specifically. The ones that might affect Orem.
Okay.
And probably just since you're in the thick of it, just. I'll let you go where you want to go.
Let me do this. May I? Uh, yes, thank you. I'm going to pass out, uh, you, uh, a document blueprint for 2025 and, uh. Power in Utah's future. It's a. It has the priorities and what we're working on here in the state of Utah, at least from the senate side and majority caucus there. I would like to first say. As we look at every level of government. I'm often asked, we oftentimes we don't. Focus on, uh, anything but what the problems are. And we certainly have challenges gratefully solved. You've got to have wind. To, uh. Be in the sails to get the ship where it needs to go. And that's a blessing, but I've often said, I'll just share as a segue that. I've really often said, if we. Many, many, many of the problems would, uh, be resolved if we would, uh. Align constitutionally. Uh, ask the question, if we're going to govern, who should govern? And then stay in those lanes. Do you know the, the people are, are the, are the sovereign really? And we are all servants of the people and, uh. We serve at their pleasure. And there's these great documents that we have. We have the wonderful blessing, the Declaration of Independence talks about. The. Unable rights from our divine creator, life, liberty, pursuit of happiness. Uh, we have the wonderful blessing of the constitution and. Really, uh. Washington's farewell address, he talked about the importance of the pillars of. Morality and religion to really support. We, we, we know that, uh. There's not laws or armies strong enough to control a immoral people. So there's a real sense there. And so as we talk about that constitutional alignment. Uh, is so important. And I think we, maybe some of the questions you have, I'll, I'll refer back to that alignment. We have. Uh, a federal government that has very limited powers. We have a, then the state broad and, and we have the powers within the state of the political subdivisions, the counties and the cities and specific. Codified and constitutional responsibilities with each. The alignment, constitutional alignment, and then. I'll often say. Aligned with the spirit of those foundational documents, love of God and love of neighbor would really solve a lot of the problems we have today. And that's, uh. I'll just offer that as, as a segue in. I think the state of Utah is a lot, a lot like Orem. There are so many good things taking place. You'll see. On the back of that, uh. Some of the recognitions and, and I, I'm, I'm, and I, and I've reviewed the success and the efforts of this wonderful council and staff and. Uh, and the, the great story that's told here, but it's similar at the state level. Number one state overall is. Why, for two years in a row, the US News will report number one economic outlook, number one for social mobility. Number one for starting business, best job environment, best state to move to, most affordable state, most independent state. Hottest job market, number two state for education, number two for small business, highest volunteer rate. Yep. Of all. Uh, then you look at the, uh. You know, as you look at education, uh, recently, recent studies show, uh. Our eighth grade reading scores are top of the nation, ACT scores, number one in the nation. So there's a lot of key indicators, lot, lot to be positive and I. And I know, I think it's important as we. Put, uh, our work gloves on and, and our, get our shovels out that we remember all the good that we have to start from. And there is so. Much good. I was, uh, another interesting statistic is, uh. Number three overall in child well-being. Uh, we talked about eighth grade, third highest scores in the nation on math scores for eighth graders, fourth for reading scores for eighth graders. Best return on investment. Number one and two nationwide in concurrent enrollment. So there's a lot of, lot of positives. But as we all know, as we talk to, uh, the, all, all those are involved in this, there's challenges to come with it as well. And so addressing those challenges. We've identified, positioned ourselves as a, a new energy frontier in state of Utah is a top priority, education, water, fiscal responsible tax cut. We'd like to see, this will impact a lot of our citizens here, a removal of the tax on social security, for example. Innovation, economic prosperity, quality of life, transportation, affordable housing, public lands. So those would be. Our focus. I have assignment in the senate. I chair. The social service appropriations committee, which represents about a third of the state budget, right about nine billion dollars. We're in the jaws of that right now, getting our base budget set. We, we seek to have a base budget set the first three weeks of the session. So that will go into effect if. If, if we can't agree on the, the building block. So that's a very helpful aspect to keep care of the fiscal stewardship. We have several. Pieces of. Of legislation dealing with policy and then of course oversight. Those are the three pillars of our, at the state level. You're going to probably ask me questions about zoning and horror 35,000 homes going to go and all that. I don't, you know, those pillars we have, and again, you know, constitutional alignment and all those things are. Something that we need to remember and keep before us. Some two or three piece legislation that, uh, that been working on directly impact the city here. The had a couple of bills today. One was the Provo Canyon. Resource management plan, how we're going to manage Provo Canyon to keep it what it can be and help it be its best version. Uh, we're that there's a study that started, uh. Several years ago, and that continues. So we're going to continue that, hopefully have that wrapped up in, in two years. Uh. First day of the session. We, uh, moved out of the senate, our resource management plan amendments. There's, that's a. Remarkable document, state of Utah and all the counties in Utah put together a resource management plan. How are we going to take care of our water, our air, our natural resources? All the things that we have, as you know. At the national level, if there's, for example, there's a, a, a national park, there's a resource management plan for that national park, or if there's a. Uh, monument designation, there's a, we're going to put together a resource, how are we going to manage this resource? And a resource management plan is a key, key issue and, and we have. Gone through the process over the last 10 years of creating those resource management plans county by county, all 29 counties have that in place now. State has one for the state and it, uh. It's interesting to note as we interact with our federal counterparts that the federal law states that if there is a resource management plan in place, a local resource management place, the, the. National federal agency is required to align with that plan. And so you have. Lot of discussions on, okay, we're not being consistent. We're not, we're not staying on our lane. So a lot of federalism issues I, I, I have. Chair and I'm the past chair of the. State, uh, our federalism commission, a lot of federalism issues we're working with. Have several pieces of legislation related to that. We really, I think, have an opportunity. Uh, before us, maybe a generational opportunity to do some unique and wonderful things in that way, given the challenges. We saw last night announcement of a freeze on funding. That's a concern. We need to understand what that means. My, uh. Social service budget is about 42% of its impacted. I would note that as the state of Utah. The amount of tax revenue collected federally from the state of Utah and the amount of. Spending federally in the state of Utah is equal. So we're about equal. A lot of states. Give a lot less than they receive, obviously, because we have a, uh, you know, a, what is it? 35, 36 trillion. Can you imagine that? I was, there was 12 trillion when I started my service in that state. It was tripled. It's just remarkably stunning to see what's. And how that's going to impact us. So a lot of the challenges, I think, we at the state level and the city, the local level need beware of is impacts of, uh, national policy. Really, if, if, if we just stayed in our lane, we, we would be a lot better off, but we take the landscape that we have and do the best we can and be wise stewards and be a light and example for the rest of the nation. That's really. It's, I think there's so much here in Orem. To be pleased with and grateful for, starting with the goodness of the people and what happens in. The homes and in the communities. So with that segue, I'll just turn it to you. I, I don't want to tell you what I'm, what my goals are because my goals are to serve you. So how can I be of help?
Say. Brent, have you, have you got the legislative priorities list that we made?
Yes. Yeah, I could share that.
Okay. I just thought that might be useful to share that.
Yep.
Uh, to give that framework and then. Did you want to say something? Yeah.
Senator, when you were in the house, you were a water expert. Yes. Are you, are you doing any of that in the senate? Because Utah lake's a major issue and I know you have expertise there. Yes. Could you tell us a little bit about that? Let me, I didn't, I kind of touched on my assignments. One of my assignments is serve on the water development. Okay. To can you that? Well, I didn't say it. So thank you. My fault, not, not your miss. And then I have that assignment, a federalism assignment, natural resources. I'm, I'm on that. And then my. Two appropriation assignments are, I chair the social services and I'm the past chair of the transportation. I, that was what I was last couple of years with transportation committee. I'm on that committee. So those are the areas, water. I'll, you just, just a quick report, water right now are 73% of normal. Uh, our, one of the nice things is our groundwater is a little higher than that's a little higher. It was not in 80, it was the high seventies of normal. Remember when we went into that drought year, we were, we had the lowest soil content. Well, if you don't remember this, this is the detail, but I pay attention to had the most. Moisture in our soil than we've ever had historically, but so we're there. Our reservoirs statewide are 20% above normal. But it would be well for us, like the general in the bulge instructed his troops to pray for good weather that we pray for snow in the next couple of months. So that's. Was that, that's a little bit, is there a specific question? No, I have a follow on. As you know, I have employment there, but also many of our students are employed at Utah Valley University and. There's talk about major higher ed cuts and Utah Valley University does not get the same bang per student, dollar per student as the other universities in the state. I hope you'll. Work to protect that. So we have students, our children go to school there. Well, UVU is, uh, you know, it's remarkable. You look at our, our little area here with two universities and, and the, the capacity, the muscle of the. Business ex, business expertise and the, the, I talk about trusts, you know, the intellectual trust and the capacity trust. And that's remarkable. Really this area leads our state in so many ways and our state leads the nation. It's remarkable. So be careful. Don't mess it up, guys. We all need to be wise, be wise stewards, but I, the, the good story about UVU is that the bang for the dollars has been so effective and awesome. And it's a great story to tell. And I know that there's. Some higher ed rumblings here, here and there, but, uh, we are, uh, we have, you, you need to recognize the dynamics and who we have where. We have some really good, uh, voices for UVU in, in important places and as you know, so that's, thank you for, but the best thing is, is we, we don't have to apologize. For the stewardship in that sphere. It's, it's very positive. So mayor and council, just first, I want to acknowledge publicly that Senator Stratton was really helpful to us last year and, and helped us get some approach appropriations to go towards. Future widening of Center Street between Geneva Road and I-15, especially as it crosses that railroad spur there. So thank you for that. Thank you. That was, uh. Very kind. Well, it was, here's the thing. We just need to tell our story and it's a good solid principle based story. And when we do that and tell it effectively, it, it prevails. So thank you. That was, and I, I'd just say, let me just say, uh. Counsel and mayor, and I love our staff. I love our first responders, our, you know, I, I, our, uh, we are so blessed. We're blessed, you know, with a wonderful city manager as well. Thank you. In terms of, uh, Senator Stratton, in terms of kind of the city's, um, major priorities. Thank you. Priorities. Uh, one is, uh, that's of concern is, is growth management and, and hopefully keeping the ability for local mayor and councils to, to help manage growth. And I'll share with you a, a brochure we have that kind of shows how Orem has already been doing what the state is hoping that other cities will do. And so. There's some good data in here that I'll share with, that I'll leave with you to, to look at that. I would say this, some of us have been, I was looking at. Years forward and I recognized it was, it was a tender experience, recognize all those that have served before. And there used to be a time when there's a great, uh. Rivalry between Orem Provo. We had Orem Tigers and Provo Bulldogs, you know, and honestly, we'd have the football games we'd have in BYU stadium and the basketball games would be in the old Smithfield house and then the Marriott center. I mean, it was a big deal. So there's a lot of. But I would say for me. I represent, I have Deer Creek and Walzburg and Sundance and I come down like 2,000 north and Orem, east side of state street. Down to like Desert Industries and then it follows the river. Out and then back all of Provo. So I have a different perspective than a lot of the, the, the members legislature. And I, I can say, look, I represent, I represent. Political subdivisions are getting it right and have pulled their weight and doing what they need to do. And so we need to make sure. We keep the line. Of communication open. If you're seeing something, you have great, you know, League of Cities towns does a good job. Just, we need to be able to tell that story, but thank you for that. That'll be helpful.
And that was going to be my comment was just, I just want to tell you thank you because I have as a representative and now I'm sure as a senator. You have really, um, you really understand and you support and you're a warrior for keeping the decisions close to the people.
Right.
You know, um. Government needs to be close to the people so we can then. You know, represent absolutely. So thank you.
Yeah. Sound for instance, the government closest to the people is best for the people and, and that, that's important. I would say. I would also, I, I, I just had the thought that I like to say is that. As we tell that story is, is we show the things we're doing here. It's some great models to follow as well. It's fun to be, to be able to just tell the good stories and what's taking place and, uh, but you know, there's, there's things unintended consequences come along. We. We'll get them corrected, but nobody's perfect, but you could, if you're worried about growth. You look at all these awards, if you're worried about growth. You don't, what you don't want to do is not be who you are. you don't, what you don't want to do is not be who you are. But you have to realize part of the problem is who you are because you're sitting good and everyone wants to live here. So what do you do with that? So that's part of the challenge. But again, very good helpful information. Thank you.
So I've, I've got a question, Kevin. So I appreciate your service and known you for a long time. And I think you serve the citizens in very well, what you represent. But the question is, you know, Governor Cox is, you know, let's build all these homes. And what you said is stay in your lane. I, I agree with that a hundred percent because we build all these thousands and thousands of homes. But do we have the resources to back it up? Like you said, the water. And that's why I think we need to be very careful that we have the necessities of resources, instead of saying, hey, we're just going to build these homes. Where are you going to come up with the water? You know, that's the question. So I just think we need to make sure that don't take the power away from the cities because we know what's best for our city and one glove doesn't fit all. And hopefully you can take that message back to your colleagues and say, we need to stay in your lane, even though you're developers or whatever, they need to stay in their lane and, and back off a little bit. So that's just been a pet peeve of mine since day one, but.
The, the same analogy that we use in working our federal counterpart is, is the same. We can easily say, it, it, you know, what's good for one is good all the way. It's good, it's a principle that's good at every level. And so excellent point. Thank you, Councilmember Spencer, and thank you for the reminder, but it's, it's an easy narrative too. They hear me talk a lot about it, the state and federal. And so it's an easy narrative to recognize and see. But I would say that it's, we need to rec, we, we, we do need to acknowledge, we do have a challenge across the state. But we're, we need to allow healthy tension in the discussions, but we are all on the same team. It's not only the home, but it's the sewer. It's the infrastructure, the sidewalks, it's the schools, it's all that. I was hoping not to say that word school tonight, we might get into some discussion. The schools, it's all, it's all those things are so, so important. So that's.
Well, I think too, I mean, if you look at Orem, we are ninety five percent built out. So what's good for us or what the state's trying to do, it doesn't work for us. So, you know, maybe in Fairview where the, the governor lives, maybe he can build high density. I don't know, but it needs to, we've already got our percentage of high density, we need to keep it. And maybe Alpine or somebody else can pick up the slack and bring the high density.
An interesting ask, thank you, the interesting, that's true. The interesting aspect is, is you look at a statistic, we, we talk about that bottom of our public lands. What I do with our public lands is so important because our quality of life and recreation and all that's there. But we need to realize that we have inside our cities and towns inside the county of Utah County. We have twenty nine thousand acres inside the city limits of federally managed public lands. And the, one of the challenges with Orem is, you know, we, we're, we're, the saturation, as you said, it's there. And so how do we do that? But as we have the opportunity in the areas that are opening, we need to be careful not to inappropriately crowd, crowd our lifestyle, but there's room. But there's not room really in Provo and Orem. That's what I was trying to, you know, trying to say. And so let's, let's, we have some good templates to follow and good planning and let, let's, let's learn the lessons and, and apply them in the appropriate place.
In terms of a few other priorities that the city's kind of keeping an eye on, on, on the state level is our, our sort of transportation related. In our kind of southwest area over by the, the Orem Temple, there's a desire to work with the state and UDOT to do a jurisdictional transfer of, of property for the continuation of what's called the Lakeview Corridor. So I was an Orem Tiger, but that road is going to go down by the new, you know, Provo High School and, and the, the Provo Airport. And we've aligned well with Provo City and Mayor Cafusi in, in trying to essentially help finish and complete that connection. And so hoping to work with the state well on that.
Let me work with you on that, but let me just say and ask, do you, do we have all the ride away acquired?
Not all of it, but we, we do have a schedule of funding that's already kind of been identified with, with MAG. And so we think that it's, it's most, it's got a lot of momentum behind it already to, to get accomplished.
Good. One of the, one of the issues we are concerned about is corridor funding and making sure we have the resources put in place and we're looking at that as a budget item. So thank you for, for being aware of that, for articulating that.
Another thing is just trails and we're hoping to apply for some, some state grants for, for improving trails in the city, whether it be to start to look at west, the West Union Canal and turning that into a trail or a great separated bridge crossing over the Murdoch Canal Trail as it crosses sixteen hundred north there. So if we could, we'd love to have help with some of our state representatives to.
You want to have a bridge go over the road, you have the tunnel, you don't, is, are we thinking different place? No, that's, that's eighth, you're talking, I'm, I'm right, okay, I'm right with you. So I, yeah, the, the, the Union Canal, I, I know the footprints have always got aggregating background and, and this swam in a lot of them. And but that would, that, that Union Canal would be just spectacular. That would be a real, yeah, that, 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 that'd be, that'd be wonderful.
And we know there's a competitive process for those grants, but we'd love to work with you to make sure that our application process is.
Thank you. I, I, I sit on the appropriations committee that oversees that as well as the standing committee. So let's, let's have that and there's some, and there's a real desire to have those alternative means of getting from A to B, you know, and there's, we're working on, I guess you could start in, in Orem and go up the canyon all the way up into Park City and back down, you know. And so the wonderful trails and opportunities, but we need to remember those that are right here in the, in our dense populations. An interesting fact, Wasatch Front is one of the most densely populated areas in the United States. I don't know if you're aware of that. It's really interesting because of the, what we have with the, you know, the mountains and the lake and, and what we have. So we've, we've got to thank you for that. What, what others are you working on?
And we're just going to say, you know, those are the best choices, those two, I mean, just, you know, we're, we're just going to really push for that right now and, and let you know, let's get those applications to the top of the pile, right, Brent?
There's no question, right? But I, I will say that we don't have a lot of access funding, but we have put historically, last year on our transportation committee, we put a hundred million dollars aside, you know, for that and, and an ongoing source. So we'll see how that comes together. But yeah, thank you.
Another priority is we're keeping an eye on the short term rental that we've heard of a bill or two that may be in the works in, in, that's intended to kind of set some guardrails. So we're just interested in, in honestly receiving kind of state feedback input, essentially boundaries to, to how to regulate short term rentals. So that's of interest to us.
Well, yeah, I, I think I've been asked to be the Senate sponsor on a piece of legislation from our neighbor Provo, concerned of not a lot of tools that the municipalities have for bad faith landlords. And so let's visit about that, make sure you're we're, we're being helpful and not unintended consequences. So thank you.
The final thing I, that we talked about as a council, mayor and council is we want to keep an eye on the potential legislation related to a utility transportation fee and, and how that might pan out as well and what, at least want to be, ability to be able to kind of look into it and see what may make sense or not for, for the city of Orem in that regard.
Thank you. I need your help. You're going to see things that we have, it's crazy, we have over three hundred education bills filed. I think that's just absurd. Can you imagine being in business and having to, I just, I just. But my point is, I haven't heard of that. So do you have any information on specific legislation who sponsors are?
I, what would probably be best.
Offline? Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll share some talking points from.
Perfect, that's perfect, that's perfect. Thank you.
The last thing I'll say is you shared all the wonderful accomplishments. We've recently put together all of our accomplishments and areas of focus and had a retreat. So I'm, I'm going to share that with you too.
Thank you.
So that we can show that we're aligned with you and the state in making our, our community great.
Our, we are so blessed, aren't we, really? I just, I sat there with my sweetheart, just to be able to sit with my wife and pray together and stand and say the pledge of allegiance together. There are so many things that happen that are so remarkable, that people have, we stand on shoulders of sacrifice and to, to just have, and, but we need to ever be watchful. It only takes one generation to forget and a lot of, one of the most satisfying and I think helpful piece of legislation we're working on is to create Founders and Constitutional Month in September. You know, we, we forget who we are and we forget the, and we have to be careful that we ever watch what, thank you, yes. I, I wanted to point that out, I was just trying to say, you know, Utah's doing some good things too, trying to follow your example. How's that? Thank you so much.
Do we have any, any other questions?
Did you have? I just want to say along with everyone else, thank you for what you're doing, Kevin, Senator.
Appreciate. Just don't call me late for dinner.
Yeah, I know that. Just appreciate your service and your strength and your confidence and, and your willingness to listen and to consider our concerns. It's great knowing that you're there and that you understand the challenges that we face here in Orem, because you've been here, you've been here with us and I just appreciate your representation.
You know, thank you. I, I know where the rubber hits the road. And, you know, we talk about life, literally pursuit of happiness, that's more profoundly and intimately impacted what takes place right here than anywhere else, any other form of government. And so we are in this together. I'm grateful for the relationships I have with all of you. I feel like I have the, we're all on speed dial and I, the thing I'd like to say and I, 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 I'm thank you for not asking about education and school district and everything, that's fine. We'd be glad to talk about it, but we, that is an example, if you, you've got to get it right. It's, let's get it right. And I, the Senator Grover, I'm, I sit five feet from him on the Senate floor. And he is absolutely committed to listen and take all the input. And we expect a piece of legislation out next week, but now is the time, if, as you're reviewing it, if you have any questions, just make sure let's, breakdown of communication is a breakdown of good results. And so let's keep those communications and I'm grateful. Councilman, great for the association, the opportunity that we've had to work together and let's continue that process. Thank you. You make it easy to represent, you know, it's like UVU. I love telling the UVU story, you know, it's, it's, you make it easy. So keep it up. So, and, you know, just acknowledge, we do have the wind, so let's set the sails. We use the wind to help and improve versus the other, so.
I just want to echo that, Kevin, I, I appreciate my relationship with you and the time we've gone over a lot of different things and, and just all the good work that you do. You, it's great to have advocates up there at legislature for us and we really appreciate that.
Don't be afraid. I, I tell, you know, if you think, you want to say something to me, you, you don't think I want to hear, that's when I really need to hear it. So just, let's just stay in touch. Okay, thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming tonight. We really appreciate it.
Keep up the good work.
We will. Okay, next up, we've got item six point three, a presentation of the C Council, twenty twenty five areas of focus with Pete Woffley.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. On there at the die, you'll find a, a kind of a nice copy of the thing that we gave you at the retreat that goes, just goes through the twenty twenty four accomplishments and the things that were done last year. But today we're here to talk about what we're going to do in twenty twenty five. And as you were all at the retreat, you were there, you set the goals. And so really what the purpose of this presentation is just letting you know that we heard you and we're taking ownership of the vision and the goals that you gave us. And we're actually really excited to get started. So you'll also find a notepad that you can use throughout the year that keeps all the goals and the areas of focus right there handy on the left hand side. My dad always said that a goal not written down is just a dream. And so that's, that's why we wrote it down so that it's always top of mind. So just for the public record, we want to put out the areas of focus and then highlight a few goals from this year. So the first goal that's led us kind of the last couple of years is aligning the city council, see employees and citizens. And just, you know, we talked about working on our communication, both as staff and council, making sure that we're all aligned and on the same team. Remember that we're all Team Orem. We're going to expand service opportunities and we're going to improve communication with you on significant issues so that you're well prepped on any issues facing the city. The next area of focus is safe, livable, connected, engaged neighborhoods. And we, some of the goals we set this year are more community outreach through events and partnerships, short term rental regulation, preserving neighborhood character, and then updates to the general plan. So big things happening in this area of focus, just to make Orem an even better community. Next one is the thriving and balanced business environment. Here we're, we had great success last year with the Orem Business Alliance, lots of growth. We want to keep that going. We want to connect with the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce this year and really focus on those minority owned businesses, revamp our relationship and the way things are operating at the Business Resource Center. And then of course streamline the business licensing process so that Orem remains one of the top cities in the nation for starting a business. For dependable, dependable infrastructure, we have the State Street beautification, work on our trail system, the active transit plan. And for Dave Spencer, I put nine fifty north. And it's on here too, so we won't forget.
So it's written down, but you know what that means sometimes.
So for the community focus and effective government legislator outreach, which we just witnessed, I thought that was a great connection to make with Senator Stratton, continue the UVU dialogue, we have a great partnership with them, just keep that going in the right direction. And then this year really get serious about the Orem Community Foundation, we have some great things going, so we just want to keep the momentum. And then the final area of focus is continue, it's the skilled and talented workforce focusing on our employees, continue employee relationship building, more cross training and career growth opportunities. And I had to use the picture of Jim Yeoman from last council meeting because he was just looking so sharp. And he honestly is a great example of what we all strive to be, someone who's well trained, dedicated and leads by example. So I thought that it was fitting to include him. But we just want you to know that we take it very seriously, the goals and the vision you set for us. And we're all in and we look forward to making it happen and reporting back this time next year that we got her done.
Thank you, Pete. We appreciate that. We've definitely got our map laid out for us this year. We'll move on to item seven, personal appearances. And we have two residents on the, on the list tonight. And I'll just invite you to come up and share your thoughts with us. First, we've got Derek Phelps.
Thank you so much. My name is Derek Phelps and I've been a resident here of Orem City for over two years now. I own two properties within the city and my wife and I absolutely love this special area and this special community. I'm here to speak against short term rental regulation that's currently being considered by the city council. And before I dig into that, I want to thank each of you for your hard work and dedication and everything you do for this amazing city in what I'm sure at times can be a thankless job. But I, I hope you know that we appreciate you and everything you do. I want to illustrate through my remarks that the immense benefit that short term rentals can bring to our community and why regulation is not only unnecessary, but potentially harmful. A couple of years ago, my wife and I purchased a lot here in, in Orem, just right here on Center Street, a few blocks away. And we had the intent to build a short term rental on it. We put our entire life savings into this investment and our funds allowed the builder to build two other homes on that adjacent to ours that were later sold, resulting in. that were later sold, resulting in the development of over half an acre of what had previously been barren land right here in the center of our city that many neighbors commented on the inconvenience, the eyesore and the annoyance that that land was. We hired a local Orem business to do our landscaping for the property. We bought a full, a bullfrog's paws hot tub just right here on State Street, just a few blocks away. We bought furniture from several different local stores, all here in Orem, Orem, and in total invested over a hundred thousand dollars in local businesses for this investment. Our, we're now able to support local cleaners during our operations and none of this would have been possible if we, if the short-term rent, if a short-term rental wasn't an option here in Orem. Since listing our property, we welcome many guests to our home. The vast majority of those guests are welcome, we welcome are people coming to visit family. I imagine many of you have family out of town who, when they come to visit, would love to be in a well-appointed home rather than in separate rooms in a hotel or, you know, other, you know, less desirable accommodations. These, to a lesser extent, we also welcome tourists who bring, who bring spending to our community and more benefits to our economy. We also have people traveling on business that also participate in our community. I know there are many voices against short-term rentals and they point to the goat house. They point to rising housing and affordability. However, these are are, are false claims that there is such a tiny fraction in Orem of short-term rentals. There's only 200 that are full-time active short-term rentals, which is less, just over half a percent of the housing units in Orem. We can safely assume that this isn't contributing to housing and affordability. There's also a study I'd love to send you from Oxford Economics proving this. Existing regulation was able to solve issues with the goat house and other problem short-term rentals in our community. Further regulation isn't needed to address some of these issues. And I know I'm past time. I'll end there. I had other things that I'd like to say, but I would just urge you in closing to consider my story and the many others of the rising generation struggling to find opportunity in this difficult housing environment. And short-term rentals can be a very creative option for us to still make it and attain the ever more unattainable dream of homeowner, homeownership. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, next up we've got Jackson Rollins.
Hello, Mary Young and esteemed council members. Thank you for your time. I am here, same with Derek, to talk about the short-term rental regulations. I own a home on Main Street and it is an owner operated Airbnb at this point. We've had a number of guests come through, mostly reuniting with family members that are in Utah. Either they used to live here or they're coming to visit kids that are here for college. And everyone leaves a great review about how they enjoyed the stay. We refer them to local businesses, event centers, hospitals, things like that. So there's business that's coming here. And, you know, it's, it's been a really good time and I would love to see it continue the way that it is. I think there's a lot of growth potential there still. But ultimately I'm here to piggyback off a lot of what Derek said. So I'm going to keep it short and sweet. Thank you for your time again, and thank you for all you, you're doing for the city.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for those comments. We'll move on to consent items, item number eight. We've got item 8.1, approval of meeting minutes. And item 8.2, a resolution on the Geneva Road nighttime construction exemption.
So Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table to the next city council meeting, item 8.1, the approval of the meeting minutes for January 14th.
Second.
Aye.
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 That's Chris. Chris is on the mic there.
So I'd now like to make a motion that we approve the consent item 8.2, resolution on the Geneva Road nighttime construction.
Second.
Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you. Both those pass. We'll move to item nine, 9.1, a resolution concerning the sale of certain property owned by Alpine School District that's located within the boundary of the reorganized school district. Herr McKnight, our assistant city attorney will present that.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. So we, we discussed this in the work meeting and I'll, I'll be a little bit more brief. If you'd like to discuss a certain issue, feel free to, to bring it up and we can, we can discuss it in more detail. But this is a resolution before you where Alpine School District is asking for our consent, for your consent, I should say, the city councils, to sell property that is owned by Alpine School District, but that belongs in what will be the new school district that we belong to. This property is, was built by stu, it was a, it's a home, a residential home that was built by students as part of the Career and Technical Education Program run out of Tempanogus High School. The proceeds from the sale of this home will go back into the CTE Career and Technical Education Program being run out of Tempanogus High School. Currently they're building another home here in Orem that, that the students are working on and, and that they'll be looking to sell at the end of this school year as well. Under state law, because of the school district split, consent is required from all of the city councils that belong to the new school district in which the property is found. It is our understanding that Linden, Vineyard and Pleasant Grove City councils have all approved the sale and given their consent. And so this is before us for our chance to to give our input on that. And that's, that's what this item is. Any questions?
Thank you, Aaron. I think we're pretty up to speed just because we've gone through this in the, in the work meeting, but would someone like to make a.
Would you accept a motion, Mayor?
Yes.
I move that the city council approved by resolution the consent to the sale of certain property owned by Alpine School District that is located within the boundary of the new reorganized school district consisting of the cities of Linden, Pleasant Grove, Orem and Vineyard.
Second.
Aye.
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 Thank you. The resolution passes. Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
We've also got, I'm not sure if you're going to help on this next one. But Pete, are you going to come up and introduce this? And then Aaron was involved last time too.
Yeah. So for the America 250 celebration, it's just celebrating 250 years since the founding of the United States. And we're joining with the state and the organization that they've set up to celebrate the, the anniversary. And so by adopting this resolution, we'll be able to form the committee, get kind of the playbook from the state group and then get started on planning our events for 2026.
Do we have any questions?
I think I'm excited about this.
Yeah, it's going to be great.
Why don't you make the motion then, Mayor? You're so excited.
I move that by resolution, we are supporting America 250 Utah and recognizing and approving the Orem Utah 250 Community Committee.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye. Sorry, couldn't get after you. Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Okay. The resolution passes. Thank you for that presentation.
Mayor, it's 250 years since the Declaration. That's just forming information.
Okay. Thank you. Well, thank you for that. Okay. Last item on our agenda. Relatively short agenda tonight. We've just got city manager, item 11, city manager information items. Bren?
Yes, really quick. I handed you all the housing brochure that you saw that I, I shared with Senator Grover. So that's, this is the finalized version, both for you, but also to share with those on state legislature or state staff that, or opinion leaders, if you want to share that. And then we had, if not the biggest, definitely one of the biggest youth council attendance at the day at the legislature last Wednesday. So that was really wonderful to see. So our youth council is anxiously and energetically engaged. And then I just want to make note to, to take a look at your calendars. We've got our annual Fire Department Awards banquet on next Thursday, February 6th, and it'll be at the UVU Ballroom this year. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Bren. I just want to reinforce this brochure. As far as this is not just a brochure, another brochure to look at and throw away. Now this brochure is a big deal because this basically explains where Orem's at in the housing situation and all of the things that we've done and basically how we're 10 years ahead of everyone else in this program. So we want to get that messaging out. Thank you for putting that together. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
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 We're adjourned. Thank you.